I call this April 10, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing is approval of minutes of March 27, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the March 27, 2017, regular meeting as submitted.
Second?
Your motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. It's now past the hour seven. Scott Sharpentier, DPW Director of Financial Assistant Application and Loan Agreement under the MWRA Local Water System Assistance Program. Scott is not feeling well this evening, so John's gonna take over.
So I'll step in for Scott. So we've got some great news for your consideration this evening. As you all recall, back in 2004, Town Meeting approved a $1.5 million meter replacement program. And that program is pretty much complete. There's a couple of outstanding meters that haven't been completed yet, just some difficulty getting into the houses of the last few folks. But for all intents and purposes, the project is done. And we're at the point now where it's time to permanently finance that debt. And I'm very pleased to report that Scott Sharpentier, the DPW Director, became aware of a program that's run by the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. As you all know, we buy our water from the MWRA, and we have for many years now, since the wells came offline. And they have a Local Water System Assistance Program. And so as we were looking at the program, and we were looking at this debt that we were going to be issuing, we sort of, we're trying to figure out a way where we can take advantage of this program. And so what's before you this evening is the package that we came up with. And that is basically, it's a $1.5 million project. It's actually a little bit less than that, now that it's completed. But essentially, what we're going to do is use $500,000 of retained earnings from the Water Enterprise Fund, basically like free cash, but for the enterprise fund. And then we're gonna take advantage of this loan, which totals $986,053. This loan is an interest-free loan through the MWRA's program. Now, the beauty of this is, this program, or rather, this project's already been approved by Town Meeting and implemented. Now it's just a matter of how you're going to finance it. So the package that is before you tonight for your consideration is to buy down $500,000 of the project and finance a rest through the MWRA Assistance Program. And essentially, we're able to complete this project with no financing charges at all. And just on a preliminary basis, we do estimates, and assuming a 4% bond interest rate, by doing it this way, and taking advantage of this program, we'd save about $178,000 in interest costs associated with the project. So I know the June, Hubbard Ward is here. She's got some documents for your signature. But essentially, there's two motions that would be required tonight. One is to approve the sale of the bonds that participate in this program, and the other would be to authorize me to sign and execute the Local Water System Assistance Program agreement. So there's no downside to this. In my opinion, this is just great news. So when we go out with our next bond issuance, this program, or this project, rather, won't be part of that. So certainly can answer any questions that you may have?
Any questions? Yes, Jason.
Not really a question, just, I think this is a remarkable opportunity, and we're very fortunate to be able to do this level of financing at zero interest over 10 years. I mean, the savings that you quoted, $178,000, is just remarkable, and that just contributes, you know, to our bottom line, in essence. So very good work by everybody involved to secure this for us.
Great. Leslie, go ahead.
Jonathan, yeah, thank you for this information. Have there been any problems at all with this program, with the meters, or anything that anybody's run into in terms of an issue?
No, nothing that we're aware of. So, you know, the MWRA has these programs because they want their member communities to be investing in their water distribution systems. So it's one of the benefits of being a member of this organization. If we didn't take advantage of it, we could still go out and finance it on our own and pay interest, but why would you? So the beauty of it is, we did have the retained earnings that we were able to buy down so that the pieces fit together for the cost of the total project, which is just shy of $1.5 million. But, you know, the only issue would have been, if we didn't have the retained earnings to buy it down, we would maybe still have to finance some portion of it that wouldn't qualify under this loan. But the way we've structured it, everything fits, and it makes perfect sense. We had been building the fund balance up in the water fund in anticipation of a possible water treatment plant, which no longer looks like it's going to come to fruition. So we've built up the fund balance. This is an appropriate and timely use of that fund balance.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's terrific.
Jason, yes?
One more question. We had a $1.5 million bond authorization for this project, so I guess a portion of that is being used, the 986...or no, it's not.
Yeah. Are you asking whether or not we would need to rescind that authorization?
Yeah, how would the prior authorization be?
Well, you're still gonna be responsible for almost a million dollars' worth of bonds under this program.
Right.
So that's where it'd be.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote that the sale of the $986,053 water bond of the town dated May 15, 2017, to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the authority, is hereby approved, and the town treasurer or other appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on May 15 of the years and in the principal amounts as follows: $98,605.30 in each of the 10 years, 2018 through 2027. Do I continue, or do I stop?
Oh, it's two parts, so let's, we'll prove that first, and then go to the second part.
Okay, two motions.
I need a second on that first.
Second.
Okay. Correct?
There's still more to this motion.
There's still more to this motion, very well. I further move the board vote...
There you go.
Okay.
I further move that the board...
Sorry about that, Jason.
...vote that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents, as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. So motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. Okay. Here's the second part.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the financial assistance application and the loan agreement under the MWRA Local Water System Assistance Program as submitted, and to authorize the town administrator to execute the same.
Second?
Okay, another motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Okay.
June's got some documents for you to sign.
Yep. Okay.
Hey, I got promoted to town manager. It's great.
Two seconds, I'll be with you.
Realize we had you signing every page.
Yeah, apparently.
Just take the title for right now.
What a great matchup today, Sale and Verlander, Detroit and Red Sox.
Don't say anything, 'cause I DVR'd it.
I don't know, I haven't been home, so I changed real quick. Jason, do you want to do reports while we're waiting for the documents, or?
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
On this past Friday night, April 7, I was in attendance at the Northborough Ed Foundation Team Trivia Night, held at the DoubleTree Hotel. I think we had something close to 50 trivia teams participating. And this, the fundraising for this project was in part to support their Chromebooks for Classrooms initiative over the last year. They've been doing a fundraising campaign with a goal of $50,000 to purchase 200 Chromebooks for use in the K-8 schools. And they exceeded that goal. I believe the Chromebooks are already in hand and distributed throughout the schools. So I just want to thank a lot of the people involved from Northborough Ed Foundation. I can't name them all by name, but I'll just refer to President Merrill Borden's description, 30 women and one very lucky guy. I also want to thank her quiz master, Jack Kane, who always does a fabulous job to put the quiz together. And we had a number of celebrity judges in town, including our own town administrator, John Codere, and town moderator, Fred George. So just thanks to all of them for participating, thanks to all the sponsors who support the event, and thanks to all the people who came out and contributed the program to make it possible for us to have...
Jason, can I ask what team won?
What team won?
Yes.
Bill, I'm too modest to tell you.
So something's changed since Friday night, then.
Heard you doing a lot of bragging on Friday.
We...
It's all right, though.
We had a good night.
Jason's team won, just so you know.
We had a very good night. The dream team with Tony Armata, Chuck Hart, and Chris "Rain Man" Benson. So that kind of gives you an idea of...
Excellent. Jump to your documents, sign those for June, and then...
Yes. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Leslie?
Okay. I first wanted to wish good luck to all the Northborough Boston Marathon runners on Monday, the 17th. I listed those people about, maybe a couple of weeks ago. I think there are about nine or 10 of them running, so I think that's an amazing feat, and I want to wish them all luck. I also want to thank our DPW Director, Scott Sharpentier, for his work on the 2017 pavement management plan and the street listing that we received. I thought that was good, it's very inclusive, and I think it's good for residents to know that it is a concrete plan, so to speak, and that residents should rest assured that work is being done, that it's not just a random thing of, oh, they're out on the street and they see a few cracks and say, okay, we'll fix that tomorrow. I mean, there's a very specific plan, and people should appreciate knowing that. So it's a great job on his department's part. I also wanted to mention to everyone, please come to Town Meeting on Monday, April 24, at 7:30.
Stole my thunder. I was gonna remind people.
You were?
That's good. No, no, excellent.
I wanted to say 7, because that's the time of our meetings, but it's at 7:30, and it's at the Algonquin Auditorium, and there's plenty of parking. Please, please come. It's a really interesting meeting. You learn a lot about the town and what's going on, and it's certainly much more appropriate to come and be able to vote, as opposed to watching on replay, which is obviously available. But I think it's important to attend in person, if you can do that. And I also wanted to thank Police Chief Liver and Fire Chief Parenti for their detailed monthly reports. Lots of detail, very interesting to look at, lots of graphs and charts, and it's very easy to read. So thank you very much to both of the departments for that. So thank you very much. That ends my report.
Don?
Thank you. First, I'd like to note the passing of Kevin Giblin. For those of you that don't know Kevin, he lived in Northborough quite a few years. He served on this Board of Selectmen. He actually is responsible for these curtains we keep saying we need to get rid of.
And these desks we're sitting at.
And the desks, in the day, actually, they were very lovely. They've had a few years on them since then, so...but Kevin did a lot for the town in Northborough, including the construction of the loop. He was the person that came up with the ideas for the building of the loop, and what might materialize, and how that might be used. So Northborough was definitely lucky to have Kevin Giblin in its life and as part of the town. John, I had a request, well, somebody that wanted new rugs in the town hall felt that it was time, but they wanted to know, at least if we were gonna have them cleaned, so I didn't know.
No, we actually have funding to replace the rugs, but we're working right now with an architect to look at some possible reconfiguration of the space before we do that. So we've got a number of offices, as you're well aware of, that have been carved out of rooms without appropriate ventilation, heating, and cooling, and so forth. So we've been working with an architect as part of the overall project. We're looking at heating, replacement carpets, phones, but looking at possibly reconfiguring some of the space. There's a couple of areas that just no longer function anymore. DPW is one of them, Down Building and Health is another. So we will replace the rugs, but it's gonna be staged in a way that we're not going to be ripping up relatively new rugs, since we get them once every 50 years, whether or not we need them, so.
I kinda liked the others orange.
My running joke is, they were beige when they were in.
Okay, thanks, John. Actually, and I, when discussing Kevin Giblin's passing, I'd like to thank the police department. They did an incredible job. It was an incredible undertaking. A lot of people kept coming and going all night. The crossing of people on Route 20, police just did an amazing job making sure it was a safe event. The Airbnbs, have we done anything about those?
I have not heard anything more. I know the state legislature had a proposal to potentially regulate, but I'm not sure that it ever went anywhere.
Can we just check and see if there's anybody out there that might have something going somewhere?
Other towns have, particularly larger cities, have gone forward and regulated Airbnbs. So there are some towns that are out there that have done something with them. We were looking, we were looking for the state, hopefully, to have some sort of a comprehensive approach to this, rather than every town sort of going off and doing their own thing. My understanding was that it was something that the planning board had or was looking at, but I haven't heard anything. We certainly can report back on that.
Yeah, if we could just touch base with the planning board and see if they've done anything else. That, the reports of the fire chief and the police chief, I'd like to thank both departments. Monthly, it's really nice to be getting these, and they're really easy to read and kind of follow along and see what's happening, so, and see how busy both departments really are. So thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what Leslie said about Town Meeting. It's a great event, it's your say, you can get up, you can speak if you'd like, and you can vote. So if you don't come to Town Meeting and you don't vote, then don't complain. It's your time. It's the 24th, it's Monday, like Leslie said, 7:30. We'd love to see you, 'cause we're there just waiting for you, so. Ends my report. John?
No report.
No report. Okay. Public comments. Okay, hearing none. New business. Presentation of the FY 2018 capital budget. John?
Thank you. I just have a brief presentation this evening. I was at your last meeting, we talked about the operating budget. The other major leg to the financial stool for the town is, of course, our capital budget and our capital improvement plan. This is how we go about financing and planning for the replacement of our infrastructure, our buildings, and our larger equipment. So in terms of this evening, again, understanding that we've got all veterans on the board, I know you guys have seen this many times, but it's important to reiterate to people that there's a difference between a capital improvement plan and a capital budget. Our capital budget, or rather, our capital improvement plan is a six-year comprehensive plan for how we replace all of our equipment and maintain our infrastructure. So we actually look out minimally six years. We actually look out farther than that, but in terms of the actual document, we have six years of projects that are in the funding cycle. And essentially, the way it works is each year, the Board of Selectmen, Financial Planning Committee appropriations, and ultimately Town Meeting approves a capital budget. A capital budget is a slate of all those projects that you're intending to do in this year. So think of it this way, you have six years of projects. The capital budget is the year that you're seeking funding for, those projects. When those get implemented, everything shifts up a year, and then next year's projects become the capital budget. And that cycle's very important, because in many communities, people have these capital improvement plans, and then they'll refer to them as a wish list, because these are all the capital needs that people need or want, but not necessarily going to be funded. And I think that's the defining factor that makes ours different, is that the things that are in our plan, we intend to fund. And there's always time to jockey things around, to find other financing sources, like we did tonight for the meter replacement program. But essentially, it gives the department heads some reassurance that, over the years, that these projects are gonna get funded, that they aren't part of a wish list that gets reshuffled every year without any coherent priority being placed on them. So I'm gonna give an overview. For us, the capital budget this year are Articles 23 through 33. And then, last but not least, we'll talk a little bit about one of the most important things that we've done, and we've been able to accomplish in Northborough, is how we pay for these capital projects without increasing debt or tax impact. So this year, our total capital budget, so all those projects, total about $2.1 million. Just under $1.5 million are general fund projects. In other words, these are typically projects that would be funded with either available revenues or general fund debt. And then we have three projects that are through the Water and Sewer Enterprises, a couple of vehicle replacements, and a pump station rehabilitation, which totals $610,000. So it's important to note, all these projects here, these $1.5 million projects, will all be done using available funds. This is a list of the projects as they will appear on Town Meeting. There's also a list in your handout, but you can see, we have police cruiser replacements, a piece of fire apparatus, several pieces of equipment for the highway department, as well as a retaining wall replacement and roadway improvements. I think Leslie had mentioned earlier, the pavement improvement plan. This is a big piece of that plan, the financing of that plan. Then you have the sewer projects, the water projects, and last but not least, a roof project for the Proctor Elementary School. So again, all these projects that you see here total roughly $2.1 million. These are the projects that will be going to Town Meeting for your consideration and vote. This is, this slide here just makes that point again. We have almost $1.5 million in capital projects, equipment replacements. Even that roof, that $300,000 roof replacement at the Proctor School, we're paying cash for all those. We're using our one-time budget surplus from fiscal 16 to finance these projects. Water and Sewer, out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, $210,000 will be used, basically free cash, from the Enterprise and Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. And the only thing that's going to be bonded out of those $2.1 million projects is $400,000 for the West Main Street Pump Station replacement, simply because it's too much for an enterprise fund to pay as you go. And that's something that would legitimately require debt funding. This pie chart gives a graphic representation of our funding sources, and, you know, unlike our operating budget, where I always say, it looks like the giant Pac-Man, which is local taxes eating up everything else, 'cause it's the big piece of it. In this case, the giant blue Pac-Man are available funds that'll be used to pay for these projects. And then again, over here, this red piece of pie, 210, that is going to be fund balance out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, so that will not have an effect on the rates either. So the only thing, again, that's being financed is this green piece right here, and that's the West Main Street Pump Station Rehabilitation. So this is just a phenomenal trend that we're seeing in Northborough, in that we are, as part of our operating budget, we're using available funds to pay for these capital projects. And what that means is that we're not financing pickup trucks and equipment replacements, and even relatively major building improvements, like a $300,000 peaked roof. So if you remember, right now, actually, we're in the process of, we bid out in our process of putting a new roof on the police station. Again, this is being done with available funds. Don't get too excited, because there's more slides after this conclusion. I saw everybody's like, wow, he really is gonna be brief tonight. I am going to be brief, but these are very, very important things that we talk about, and it's important, because the members of the public and folks that are going to attend Town Meeting, it's important for them to understand this mysterio. I know you all have been doing this for 10 to 15-plus years, but not everybody is aware of these plans, and the planning process that leads up to these plans going to Town Meeting. But the key here is, it's very easy to come up with a balanced budget on an annual basis. We talk about this all the time. There are gimmicks that you can do. Just like in your personal life, if you would like to expand the amount of money you have to go out to eat, or to buy, you know, new electronics, or whatever it is you like to spend your money on, well, one of the easiest ways to do that is to defer maintenance on your house, and your car, you know, and your capital assets. Well, you can do that for one year, but we all know that in the long run, that is a bad strategy. You create an unfunded liability that will come back and cost you many times more money to do after the fact. Rather than replace your roof when it needs to be replaced, if you wait for it to leak, now you have interior damage, you may have rot, and you may have mold. So this program and this capital budget this year continues to invest in our infrastructure and facilities. Again, we are linking one-time revenues with one-time expenditures. If for some reason we didn't have available funds, we didn't finish the year in a positive way, you can either hold off on doing some capital, or you could always have the option of financing it with debt. But right now, we have this great link between one-time revenues and one-time expenditures in terms of capital. Previously, and I go way back, previous to fiscal 10, when we implemented the free cash policy, we used to use those one-time revenues in our operating budget. And it'd be like, again, in your personal life, you know, an aunt or uncle gifts you a large sum of money. That doesn't happen to everybody, just me? You have an aunt or uncle, somebody gifts you $10,000, let's just say, for an example. If you use that money now to permanently drive up your operating, you decide to go out to eat often, you buy a car you really can't afford, basically, you're going to create a structural deficit. When that money runs out, you don't have recurring revenues to backfill and maintain that. And that's one of the things that we don't do here in Northborough. That's why this pairing of these one-time revenues to one-time capital is so important. The best thing, in my opinion, about this particular capital budget this year is that all of the projects, I'm gonna say that twice, all of the projects are being funded with one-time revenues. There's no debt service being issued, there are no finance charges being incurred, and the best part is, there's no additional tax impact. So when people approve all of those general fund projects, not the West Main Pump Station, but all the general fund projects at Town Meeting, there'll be no additional tax impact to them. So that's a very positive thing for us. So overall, since we started this in fiscal 2012, we implemented the free cash policy in 2010. Since FY 2012, we have over $13.2 million in pay-as-you-go capital. $9.1 million of that, this is through fiscal 18, $9.1 million of that is using one-time revenues in the form of free cash to replace all form and manner of equipment and facilities. There's another $4.1 million in other funding sources. So here's the thing to keep in mind, that $13.2 million that we've spent in pay-as-you-go capital does not include $10.4 million in MSBA grant funding for the Lincoln Street School. It does not include $215,000 for the Downtown Common Project. In fact, it does not include any grant funds that we've ever received. Those grant funds we always seek and we use for capital, that's always been the case, because those things don't result in financing charges, and they don't result in tax impact to the residents of Northborough. Everything else up here, though, that $13.2 million, if they weren't financed this way, if they weren't paid for this way, those would have resulted in additional debt and tax impact. So again, this is our success slide right here. This is what every town that I speak to right now is trying to emulate our free cash policy and our capital plan in this manner. It is, across the state, it's known as the best practice in terms of replacing your capital. And the departments love it, like the fire chief and the police chief and DPW, because they know there's a funding source that's going to take care of this capital. It's not a wish list, and we don't just push off investing in our equipment. It's not a wish list, and we don't just push off investing in our equipment, because it's, I know it's not sexy to go to town meeting and ask for money for a pickup truck for DPW, but that's the vehicle that they use to provide the services that everybody counts on. There has to be a mechanism, a recurring funding source by which we can replace that equipment. As I stand here before you this evening, two pieces of information that you should all know is that the Financial Planning Committee, which is really the committee who is responsible for putting together the capital budget with me and the capital improvement plan, and of course, Jason Perrow, who's now in the Board of Selectmen, spent 10 years as the chairman of that committee. Jason knows all too well the amount of work that goes into putting that plan together. Financial appropriations, at their meeting last Thursday, unanimously recommended approval of all of the capital projects included in town meeting warrant. So right now, we have unanimous support for those projects going forth to town meetings here. So just briefly, I'm going to run through these, just so you have a sense of what we're talking about. The first one's the Fire Department. We're going to buy a forestry truck. This forestry truck is actually going to replace two outdated, older trucks that weren't designed as forestry trucks or designed to hold the weight, they're retrofitted. So we're going to turn those in. The fire chief intends to reuse some of the equipment and the pumps that are on the back of those. And so we're looking to buy one forestry truck replacement this year. In terms of the Police Department, as is part of our replacement schedule, we are going to replace two police cruisers this year. We replace two or three vehicles each year, keeps us on a cycle whereby we're replacing these vehicles, at least the frontline patrol vehicles, about every five years, and that has worked very well for us. This year, we're going to be replacing a 2013 and a 2014 vehicle. I would mention, too, it's $87,000 is the request, but it includes all of the equipment, the lights and the data terminals and everything that goes along with those vehicles. DPW has quite a bit of capital equipment coming up. We're going to replace one of our six-wheel dump trucks. These are the very large plowing and sanding trucks that take care of the town during the storms. We're replacing a 1995 International Truck. They typically have about a 20-year lifespan, and we have 10 of them, so you're going to see us every couple of years replacing one. And one of the best things about the amount of investment we've made in our equipment with regard to the various departments, but particularly DPW, is that we've gotten rid of the backlog. And now what we're seeing is, getting on a regular schedule, DPW will require about a half a million dollars a year in equipment replacement to continue to cycle through, replace these big trucks every other year. In the interim years, we'll replace the smaller trucks, but we're on this long-term schedule. We're not trying to catch up anymore like we were. Like many towns, we had not replaced our DPW equipment, and what winds up happening, just again, like your private life, all of a sudden, everything seems to go at the same time. And now you have to replace multiple vehicles and have multiple capital projects. Now we're on a really good cycle of just routine replacement in accordance with the natural life cycles of these pieces of equipment. Along with that, we got a one-ton dump truck replacement. We're replacing a 2006 vehicle, which has about a 10- or 12-year useful life. Again, a one-ton dump truck with a chip body, this is the one where you see them on the side of the road, cutting down trees, and the chipper goes right into the back of that truck as they chip everything, so they can haul it off. But we're replacing a 2,000 one-ton truck, so that has well past its useful life. Speaking of chippers, we have one chipper, that's 2009, that's being replaced this year, or the request to replace it is in the capital plan this year. Infrastructure. We talk a lot at this meeting about infrastructure. And you know, we had an issue with the Otis Street culvert. We have the Church Street culvert. When the issue came forward up on Otis Street, where that culvert was in bad shape and needed to be replaced, as part of the pavement management plan, which again, Leslie spoke to earlier this evening, we inventory all of our culverts. These are not bridges, because the spans aren't large enough to be considered a bridge. But we inventory them all, and we have several that need to be replaced over a logical schedule. The next one on deck is Fisher Street culvert, and it's in rough shape. But what's going to go before town meeting this year is $50,000 for the design work, and then we'll come back next year with the construction work based on the design and the bid. We like to do these things in two stages, so we know exactly what we're doing, and we know exactly how much it's going to cost. So when we go back to town meeting for the construction, there's no guesswork, and there's no surprises, because you've done the work that you need to do in terms of investigatory borings and things like that, so you know there's no surprises. We did this up on Otis, went very smoothly. We did it on Church Street. That project is getting ready to wrap up. Again, everything is going very, very well.
John, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, is this the, are we going to widen Fisher too, as well?
No. The plan is not to widen it. It's a fairly small back road, not a lot of traffic on it. So no, I believe the intention is to try to use the abutments on either side as they exist. We'll probably raise it up a little bit and taper it off on either side, but no, there's no plans to widen Fisher Road. This next project is one that did sort of come up quickly a couple of years ago, and we've been studying it. This is the very large, 200-foot-long retaining wall on Crawford Street. This is a dry-fit stone retaining wall that was built 100-plus years ago, and it's done well, but it's really in need of some help. This is about an eight-foot wall, and when it originally came forward to replace this with a new retaining wall, is about a $400,000 project, if you can believe it. Again, Scott Sharptier, our DPW director, when he came on board as the new director, he looked at the plan and he said, "I think there's a way to cut this cost in half." And he went out and he met with the homeowners. And instead of an eight-foot wall, it's hard to see a little in the photo, but you know, that wall and then the grade drops off. Instead of an eight-foot wall, working with the homeowners, we're going to do a three-foot wall and slope it down. So it's about a $200,000 project instead of a $400,000 project. As of this week, I have the easements that have been signed by both homeowners at no cost to the town. We did promise them, of course, that we're going to clean up and landscape that slope a little bit. We're taking about 20 feet into their yards, but they're happy, because right now, every so often, these stones are literally falling out of the wall. The other thing is that that is what is holding up Crawford Street. And if you go on Crawford Street and you look, you'll see an undulating road along the edge where the, all of the base is washing out through the wall. There's no point in fixing the road without fixing the retaining wall. So I'm very pleased that Scott came up with a cost-effective approach to this, and it meets the approval of the owners. And again, it's a $200,000 project, we'll be using free cash to finance that or to pay for that project, so no additional tax impact. This is one of these things where, you know, you like to think, $200,000 that you're going to be doing roadway work. Well, sometimes your infrastructure isn't just the pavement surface, it's what makes that pavement possible, like a culvert or a retaining wall. And these are the things that people don't see. How many people drove across the Church Street culvert every day, and it looked perfectly fine? What you don't see are those 200-year-old granite slabs underneath that are cracking, because they weren't designed or meant to handle tractor trailers or the type of load we're putting on them now. But this is exactly the kind of project that I'm very proud that we are actually doing. Article 29 is our general roadway improvements. This is an updated graph that you saw when we first did our pavement management plan. And a couple of years ago, we brought to all the financial boards and committees a proposal. We said, "There's three paths that we can go down with regard to maintaining our infrastructure." The first one, which is this red line, is if we only use our Chapter 90 funds, this are the infrastructure monies that are given to the town by the state in the form of a transportation bond. It's about a half a million dollars a year, and you can see, this is our current pavement condition index, which is 73 out of 100. Over the next 10 years, our roads overall would be failing. And then we said, "Now, in an ideal world, you'd give us $2 million, and in 10 years, our overall grade would be an 87." Well, that would be wonderful, and that would be aggressive. I always use the comment, if you are familiar with or have ever been to Disney World, Disney World's pavement condition indexed, they want all theirs to be an 85 or better. So, you know, that would get us looking fantastic. Is it realistic? Probably not. So what's the middle-of-the-road plan that we came up with? We determined we need this green line here, which is $1.1 million. When we first started this program a couple of years ago, our overall pavement condition index was a 71. Just from the work that we've done, crack sealing, and you've seen, we've touched in some way, 20% of the roads in the last year. Crack sealing, overlay, milling, paving, a lot of it is just maintaining crack sealing. If you can keep the water out of the crack, the base doesn't wash out, and you can preserve that road for another 10 years. But if you don't have that little bit of money to do that, you're down here in 10 years. So the good news is, our pavement condition index is already up from a 71 to a 73. But if we just stay with this 1.1, we'll slowly, over the next 10 years, will be better off. Ideally, ideally, I'd like to see us somewhere between the blue line and the green line. But like everything that we do, I don't bring a plan to you that isn't sustainable, but this $1.1 million is now part of our budget base. It's part of our foundation that we expend every year to take care of our infrastructure. So part of Article 29 is $300,000 to backfill what used to be additional Chapter 90 money. Do you remember a couple of years ago, the state released 300 million statewide, which got us about $800,000? That's exactly where we need to be, in addition to the $300,000 we have in the DPW budget. But they pulled back on that, which created a $300,000 gap. For the second year in a row, what I'm proposing is that we use $300,000 in free cash to backfill, so that we have a combination under this bullet right here. $500,000, we're going to get from the state in Chapter 90 funds. $300,000 is part of the DPW operating budget for roadway maintenance, and then $300,000 in the capital budget under Article 29 gets us to that magic $1.1 million. So we are maintaining the roads where we ought to be. In an ideal world, the state would increase their Chapter 90 money, and if we can still do this, we would nudge up between those two lines, the green line and the blue line. But standing here tonight, I'm very comfortable and very pleased to tell you that we have a plan, and the plan is being implemented, and it is affordable, and if approved at town meeting, we're going to continue down that path of maintaining our infrastructure. Now we shift from, those were all the general fund projects, which by the way, all those projects that I just went through can be approved at town meeting with no additional tax impact. All pay-as-you-go. And again, many years ago, we used to take that money, roll it right in the operating budget, and have a multiplier effect, and our budget would grow really faster and larger than it ought to, because we didn't have recurring revenues to support that kind of growth. Now, it only goes to one-time capital. But all those projects are going to go forward to town meeting this year, no additional tax impact, which is fantastic. DPW Water and Sewer, we've got a couple of projects here. One is a sewer inspection camera. This allows our staff to actually inspect the mains and laterals. After they've cleaned them, they can find pipe breaks, and if there's a sinkhole or an issue, they're able to go through the pipe to clean the pipes and then to scope it out to see where the problem is, so you're not digging up a whole road to find out where your issue is. This is a very important diagnostic piece of equipment that they've been doing without, but it will be a very important addition for them. This will be financed using essentially sewer fund free cash, so this again, is a pay-as-you-go project. The one project in the capital budget that will require debt is the West Main Street Pump Station, which was built in 1996. There's been a number of developments down there, additional restaurants, additional housing. The Lincoln Street School Pump Station now ties into that. It's really undersized, and that's the primary reason that we're going to need to upgrade it. It routinely is having an issue handling the flows, and it will back up on us periodically, but it's just undersized for the development that's taking place in that area town. So this is the next priority. As you know, we've already upgraded the Hudson Street Pump Station, which is where 98% of the town's flow goes through that pump station into the Westerly Treatment Plant in Marlboro. But this one here has been problematic, and really largely a function of the growth that's taking place in that area. And the last project we have is a replacement of a 2008 truck. This is a vehicle shared between the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, and again, this truck will be paid for using available funds, so no financing required for this truck. Last but not least, two years ago, I believe, we did the flat portion, repaired the flat portion of the Proctor Street School roof. This year, we're going to do these light gray areas here, here, and here. These are the peak sections of that roof, and we're going to be replacing those with pitched metal. Right now, it's asphalt shingles that just don't seem to hold up as well. The metal roofing system, similar to what we put on Lincoln Street and Peaslee, these roofs are bulletproof, and they're going to last as long as any of us are going to be around. It's at least a 50-year expected lifespan with a 30-year warranty. So with this, the second phase of this project, the Proctor Street roof should be in good shape for the foreseeable future. Again, this is a roof on an elementary school that we're paying cash for. The roof on the Peaslee School, the pitched roof, we funded under our capital improvement plan, paying cash for. So this is pretty amazing. You know, I just want to step back one moment and remind you, remember a couple of slides back, I talked about this $300,000 in the DPW budget for roadway maintenance? Do you remember how we got that money? By not financing these projects and paying cash for them, the debt service for the town's general fund has been declining. It dropped down $300,000 one year. And rather than financing something else, we took that budget capacity and moved it over into DPW, so that we wouldn't have to finance $300,000 with debt service and interest charges every year to take care of our roads. This program and this approach has been phenomenally successful for the town of Northborough and for the taxpayers in Northborough. So with that, I certainly can answer any questions. I think we have a terrific capital plan coming forward to town meeting. As I said, it has unanimous support from appropriations and financial planning, and probably the biggest beneficiaries to our plans are the taxpayers, because we are making consistent, regular, thoughtful, planned investment in our buildings, in our roadways, in our infrastructure, and we're doing it in a way that has the absolute minimal impact on the taxes. And this all has its roots in plans and policies that were passed by everybody sitting at this table in one form or another, almost eight or nine years ago. So it's all come to fruition. So that's all I have. Again, it's just a preview of what you're going to hear at town meeting, but certainly can answer any questions that the board may have.
Thanks, John. Questions? Comments? Yes, Leslie?
Comments? Thank you very much, John, and I think your last statement was the most important, which is that it should give people a lot of confidence, knowing that it's not just a random thing of what happens to look good this particular year, that it's all part of a six-year plan. It's very deliberate. People can look ahead and see what's coming up the road, so to speak, and I think it should give residents a lot of confidence, as well as all of us board members. So I appreciate that very, very much. I also have a question. Getting back to the DPW equipment replacement, in some of those cases, you mentioned useful life.
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit? Is it that in a certain case, a piece of equipment, it's anticipated that it will no longer be good? Is it just not reliable? Has it broken down?
Yeah.
What is that?
Sure, that's a great question. You know, any piece of equipment, when you purchase it, it has an expected lifespan. If you buy a vehicle for yourself, you generally have some sense of how long it's going to last. For me, I drive it until it falls apart around me. I'm still driving a 2006. But pickup trucks and these large pieces of equipment, things like backhoes and wood chippers, they have an expected lifespan. And so when you buy a new one, we're automatically looking ahead 10 years out, or sometimes longer, but typically 10 years out for when that piece of equipment would need to be replaced. Now, when it comes to construction equipment, you know, these trucks get beat up pretty hard. Plowing snow is one of the hardest things you can do on a vehicle, and they're constantly in this caustic environment with all the salt. So there's an expected life. And so for most of those trucks, we try to get 10 years out of them, which is pretty good.[1800.89] good, when you think about the type of work that these vehicles do. We don't lease our vehicles, we own them, and we maintain them. And it says a lot about the care that these guys, if you go down and look at these pieces of equipment down there, these things are well cared for. When they come back, they're washed, they're put away clean. We have a mechanic that does all the regular routine oil changes and brake jobs and maintenance on these vehicles. But, you know, they do have a limited expected lifespan, and it gets to a point where you don't want somebody to be using an old piece of equipment that's going to fail, A, when you need it during a storm typically, or B, cause an accident, because, you know, it just fails at some point. You use any piece of equipment long enough, and it's going to fail. But we look at, we have, depending on what piece of equipment, be it a fire apparatus, a police cruiser, an administrative vehicle, or a DPW truck, we know what the expected life span out of it, and we maintain it. If they last longer, then we review this every year. Sometimes we're able to bump those things out. That's why sometimes you'll see an expected life of a vehicle might be 10 years, but we'll be replacing it, and it's 15 years old. Well, depends on how much use it gets, depends what kind of shape it's in. I mean, we've all bought new vehicles that, you know, at some point, that, you know, seems to last forever, or you buy one that's a lemon, or it just doesn't seem to hold up. You know, equipment's no different. You know, construction vehicles are no different. Ambulances are no different. We've bought ambulances where we haven't had great luck with them, and we have other ambulances that held up terrifically, so. But the answer, shortly, your question, is there's an expected useful life out of any piece of equipment, and that's the replacement cycle we plan for, but we only replace things that actually need to be replaced.
Do we get some...
Trade-in?
Trade-in value, yes.
Yes. So all of the projects that are in the capital budget are net of trade-in. So we assume that we're going to trade in the existing vehicle we have, and whatever we get for that trade-in is part of the quote that we received for replacement of that vehicle.
Oh, okay.
Which is, so if we say the truck is $95,000, that's net of whatever we think we're going to get for a trade-in. Usually by time, the vehicle's at the end of its useful life, it's pretty well beat up, there's not a lot of value. Just think again about trading a vehicle in to a dealership, you know, what are they going to offer you for your car right now? So it's limited.
Right. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Question? Yes?
Yeah, John, maybe you could elaborate a little bit on this, but I think you mentioned something about the backlog of these kinds of capital pieces of equipment that we had, and how for some period of time, we had deferred some of the maintenance or replacement on them, and accumulated a lot of pieces of equipment that were all reaching, or many reaching, end of useful life over a very short timeframe. And now, over this past 10 years, with this plan in place, we've kind of worked a lot of that off, and many of these pieces are now, their in-service dates are distributed over time, and we have a natural rotation as we go through here, where only a certain number of pieces are coming up on their useful lifetime. And it's just a much more sustainable and predictable model for managing all of that, so.
Yeah, I would just comment, so I've been, when I came to town 14 years ago, first thing I did was look at our fleet list, and I found that we had a lot of pieces of rolling stock that were on our fleet list and being insured. And as I dug deeper, you know, a lot of these pieces of equipment weren't really serviceable. They shouldn't have been in service. We did have some problems with pieces of equipment that were prone to accidents, because they would fail while being used. But we had a very big backlog. And the reason we had a backlog, it's the same reason many communities have a backlog, is if your only way to buy them is to not fund something else out of the operating budget, or to issue debt, you know, you're hesitant to do both, either of those things, because you're going to, there's an opportunity cost. If you're going to pay $50,000 for a truck, then you're not going to do $50,000 worth of services in some budget somewhere. Or if you are constantly financing these pieces of equipment, which is what we had to do, then every time you add to that list, your debt service goes up and up. It's no different than you keep charging the credit card. Well, that credit card bill grows, 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 and it takes longer to pay off. So what we did, the situation that we were in in Northboro going back many years was, we had a lot of old pieces of equipment, and frankly, it wasn't serviceable, it couldn't be repaired, and so we had this backlog that we sort of needed to make up for. And that's what happens, is again, I go back to your own personal lives. If you don't maintain your house, if you don't maintain your vehicle, at some point, everything comes due at the same time. It's not a secret, it's not magic. You have to pay these bills. The question is, do you pay them all at once in a haphazard way, or do you replace them in a logical cycle that minimizes the tax impact, maximizes the utility of the vehicles, and smoothes out the impact over the years? And we are hitting our stride right now. We're hitting our stride with our fire equipment, we're hitting our stride with our police equipment, we're hitting our stride with DPW. Regular routine investments means we have no big backlog. Now, one area that we do have a little bit of a backlog is our roadways, but we know it. We've defined what the backlog is, we have defined a plan, and we have agreed on a financing approach to that plan. We just went through it. So, you know, again, where I get nervous as a manager is when you have a problem, and you haven't gotten your hands and your head around how big the problem is. And it's one thing if you decide not to replace a piece of equipment or to do a project, but if you don't know what the complete implications of that decision are, then you're making a decision in a vacuum, not really understanding what you're doing. And that's what happens in a lot of communities. People just, they just defer, because they don't want to have the discussion at town meeting about the deed for this equipment or these roadways. And it's across the entire United States. There's an article in the paper today, there's a picture of a bridge crumbling somewhere. I can't remember where it was, but, and it is, the comment was, you know, that our infrastructure is deteriorating. So in Northboro at least, our equipment's good, we've maintained our buildings, we put roofs on our schools, we're slowly renovating our buildings. We've done the library, senior center, Lincoln Street School, next on deck is the fire station, as you well know. I mentioned some work being done in this building coming up. So we're taking care of our equipment, our buildings, and our infrastructure. But we're doing it in a logical way. Again, I can't stress that enough. And these are plans, they take years to come up with. So if we decide not to do a project, if you were to tell me, John, this year, we understand you need 1.1 million dollars to maintain our roads and not see our pavement condition index decline, but we either don't want to spend that money, or there's some other project that we want to do, I can tell you exactly what the impact of that decision would be. And then you can say, well, you can weigh both things and decide what you want to do. Our job as staff, and I say this all the time, fundamentally, is to identify problems or opportunities for the boards and committees, to frame them up, and to make a recommendation to you. And that's what we do at all these, particularly these joint meetings that we have with all the financial boards and committees, is we identify the problem, we frame it up, we offer a solution, be it infrastructure, or other post-employment benefits, or pension liability, whatever it is, so that when you make a decision, or you decide not to make a decision, you understand that that is in and of itself a decision, and it has implications. And that's why I say, our boards and committees in Northboro, I think, have the best information available to them when we go to town meeting, and it's something I'm very proud of, because, you know, if we're asking you to make recommendations, or we're asking you to make decisions, how do you do that without having real information and know what the implications are of your decisions, one way or another? And I think that's one of the things that the paid staff in Northboro does very well for the boards and committees.
Thank you, John. That was excellent. But it's true, it's, we've put a plan together, and through everything, through, you know, the capital plan, and, you know, infrastructure, and working on the pavement management. I mean, we've done a lot in the last 10 years, I think, and it's really put us on a good track, you know, financially, a very good track.
I think probably the biggest compliment that we can get as an organization is that across the state, we're held up as a model, and across the state, we're asked to go out and train other municipalities, oftentimes twice our size, on best practices in capital planning, financial trend monitoring, operating budget presentation. I think that speaks volumes, and it's something I, you know, I know this board and all of our boards and committees are very proud of. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. All right. Moving right along. Next thing on the new business, reappointments of boards, committees, and commissions. We have a list for you.
Quite a few, huh? John? Yes, in your packet is a memo from Diane Whackel. It lists out all of the reappointments by committee designation for your consideration this evening. All of these appointments have been verified that the individual is in fact requesting reappointment, and equally as important, that the chairman of the committee would like you to reappoint them as well. So these are here for your consideration, you can do them as a single vote, as presented.
Yes, Don?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to reappoint those individuals who appear on the 2017 reappointment list, the corresponding boards, committees, and commissions.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay. Next thing on the new business, assignment of town meeting warrant articles. Okay, you have a copy of them, and Jeff's not here, he sent me an email, but, you know, we'll go by priority of us four here first, and then Jeff will get the remains. Don gave me a couple that she would like to do, appointment of the deputy moderator, which is one, and then consolidated personal bylaw, which she is the liaison to. So we're going on it. Leslie, do you have any priorities that you would like to do?
Town budget.
Town budget.
For one, number four.
Sure. Yep.
Let me see. I would like to do a couple of the capital improvement plan items.
Do you want to do library grants, or?
Sure, I could do that.
Okay.
Sure. Do we each want to do five?
Oh, do you want to do that one?
Well, I was going to do library grants, because I'm the liaison to the library.
Okay. Good. Yep, jump right in. Chase.
Do we each want to do about five or so? Because I counted, they're 26.
Yep.
So...
That would be fine, sure.
Does that sound reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the police cruiser replacement, also, which is number 22.
22, Leslie. Yep.
Did you have more, Don, before I...
No, go ahead, keep going. I don't...
Okay.
Okay.
Also, the number 29, DPW road improvements and maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
And, let's see. Item number 33, Proctor School Roof Repairs.
Okay.
How many is that? Is that five?
Three appears, daddy cross.
33 is the school committee's.
Oh.
Yep.
Why is that yellow? I don't know.
Yeah, number, Article 33 is the Proctor Street...
Oops, oh yeah, sorry about that.
That would be the chair of the...
Yep.
Just if I may, for folks at home or in the audience, what we're doing is, this is the Board of Selectmen's warrant, essentially, and the board is just divvying up the motions that they'll be making for the various articles at town meeting, which is separate from the next item on your agenda, which will be for you to actually vote to recommend certain articles.
Okay, I'll grab 34 instead, then.
Sure.
Water meter replacement.
Okay.
Is that five?
That's five.
That is five?
Mm-hmm. One, hold on. Two, three, no, four. I only have four for you, Leslie, so...
Okay.
Want to pick another?
Uh, I see.
Diane, could you recap which four those were, so I can keep trying?
Leslie, number four.
Thank you.
Number 22, 29, and 34.
Thank you.
One-ton dump truck with chip body and plow.
Okay.
It's a cool-looking truck.
Yep, it is. It's cool.
Thank you very much.
All right. Jason, you are on. We have you at number nine so far, the library grants.
Nine, how about number 20, application of bond premium?
Number 20? Yep.
And if it makes things easier, I'll just do 26, 27, and 28 for capital group of projects.
26, 27, 28. Okay, Don, you have two, you have one so far, and...
I have two. All right, number 18.
Number 18. 19.
I guess I like the six-wheel dump truck, 23.
I'll do number two. Give Jeff number three. Give Jeff number five. I'll do number 10. Give Jeff number 11. I'll do the forestry truck.
Oh, you got a truck.
Yes, indeed. Do you want it?
I know.
Okay.
Not everybody should get a truck.
All right. Yes, they are.
That's so cool.
I'll give Jeff number 24.
He gets a truck.
That's me.
Billy's got it.
Yep. So we have, I think we have, we each have three so far, correct? I will, I'll do the inspection camera.
Okay, 30.
30. Jeff can do the pump station improvements.
That's cool.
And then we should have two more.
Somebody will get an extra one.
I'll give Jeff the water sewer one-ton service, number 32. And does anybody want the Allen Street sidewalk easement? That's the last one left.
Happy to do it if you want.
You'd like to do it?
It's fine, you know.
You sure? Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So 35 is Leslie. And that should do it. Very good. And you'll keep track of that, Don?
Yeah, we'll get you a revised list, showing who will make the motion, who makes the presentations, as we typically do.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, now we're going to vote on the town meeting warrant articles, recommendations.
If I may, through the chair.
Go ahead, yes.
So you certainly can make your recommendations on any of these articles, but traditionally, at a minimum, you make a recommendation regarding the town's budget, which is Article 4, the enterprise funds, which is Article 5, and the Northboro K-28 schools, which is Article 6. So those are the basic fundamental financing budgets that allow us to do everything that we do in the town. You certainly may, at your discretion, recommend any of the capital, as I said, appropriations, financial planning, I've already done that, that's their primary roles. The only other article that the town Board of Selectmen may wish to provide a recommendation on would be Article 43, which is the town common, because you did take a position on that project initially, and this is now coming back for the construction funds, and at your last meeting, you had a presentation by the DPW director regarding the grant application and the project budget. So again, whatever you'd like to make recommendations on, but at a minimum, at least the primary budgets for the town is something that I would anticipate you would take a vote on.
So let's, let's take them one at a time, because there's not a lot of them, so. On number four, on the town budget, presented by John Cadea, Town Administrator.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article 4 at town meeting.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay. Number five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article number five at town meeting.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Leslie?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article number six at town Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article number six at town meeting.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay. How do you feel about 43, the town common? I think that we should vote on that. Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article number 43 at town meeting.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Does anybody else have a, an article that you'd like us to vote on to recommend? I would think that we could take a vote on Article 47. That's the adoption of the stretch energy code that we had the presentation two meetings ago. I mean, totally up to the board.
That's an interesting thought, actually, as far as vision.
Right. I think it's the way of the future. And it was a good presentation. That building inspector was here, and he was all for it. It's totally up to you.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make a motion.
Yes.
I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article 47 at town meeting.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so Diane, number 47, too, as well. Does anybody else have a preference of any of the other articles?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I think that Article 52, the temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana, is potentially an article that it would be good for the board of selectmen to weigh in on with the recommendation.
Yeah, I agree.
Dawn?
I think, although I understand what you're saying, I just would like to hear the presentation, exactly what they expect during the moratorium, and how long, the period that they plan, obviously is a year, but what they hope to accomplish during that year, and how they want to structure themselves during the year to come up with decisions on their recommendations in the future. Just because I haven't heard anything other than what we've got, it's an article.
That's fine. I have no objection, yeah.
Leslie, do you have an opinion on that?
Taking a vote?
No, no, you know, your opinion of, you know, should we take a vote or not?
Well, yeah, I do see your point. We really haven't received a lot of information about it. I think that maybe voting shows the community that we do feel it's important to have the moratorium. We'll get more details about it, but having, we may or may not feel that it's important to have one, I guess. That it's not a conditional kind of a thing. It's just that maybe we feel that it's a good thing to show the community that we feel it's important to have a temporary stay on this particular thing. But I do see what Dawn's saying. We don't have a lot of information yet. Hopefully, we'll hear more at town meeting.
I think I'm in agreement with Dawn, because when we make a decision on anything, whether we vote on it or support it, we always have information. It's a transparent process. You know what I mean? We hear it. I can't make a decision on something that I, myself, haven't got enough information on, that I haven't heard. You know what I mean? I can't make my mind up. So I'm kind of hesitant on taking a vote on that. Dawn?
Yeah, and I think we all have an opinion on it, and I'm leaning toward definitely supporting the moratorium. But I would like to hear just a little bit more about what exactly that process is going to be. So it's not that I don't have an opinion, but I would like to hear a little bit more before I take an actual vote.
Right. Okay. You go with that, Jase?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. It was a good discussion. Any others? I mean, I think that... Any other thoughts? Dawn? Jason? Leslie, you still looking over?
I don't see anything that I...
Okay.
That's not strongly about.
All right.
Not strongly about, but I don't think we need to necessarily vote ahead of time.
Good. All right. You got that, Di? So we got four, five, six, 43, and 47. Okay. Excellent. All right, so the next thing is setting the meeting schedule for, believe it or not, May through August.
We'd like to keep you guys scheduled and on track.
Jeez.
Oof. Through the chair, in your packet is a proposed meeting schedule for May through August, as the chairman indicated. As is traditional for us, we have one meeting in May. Usually, the first meeting in May conflicts with the election. This is still, you know, the day before, so I would propose that we keep with our traditional one meeting in May, that would be May 15. June would be regular meetings of June 12 and June 26. And then July and August, we typically meet once a month, proposing July 17 and August 14. And that would be your meeting schedule for the upcoming four months.
What's everybody think? Any conflicts? Yes. Leslie, you got it?
Oh. Okay. Looks good to me. I may have an issue with June 12. I just don't know yet.
Okay.
It's possible.
That's interesting, because I possibly will have a conflict with June 12 also, business trip.
We'd have three people, so...
You could still...
Yep. I don't have a life, so...
We'll also see, as we typically do in the summer months, you know, what's the workload on the agenda, and what's the timeliness of some of this information?
Right.
So oftentimes, it can hold to another meeting, and if it can't, we can proceed with three folks, but we can make a note of that. The only other thing I would mention before you approve this is, so your next actual meeting will be the night of town meeting, which is April 24 at 6:45 at the Aldonquin Regional High School. It'll be in room B120. That's your standard meeting before town meeting prep, to see if there's anything that you need to do heading into town meeting. Otherwise, this would be your meeting schedule.
Well, we'd like to vote as it stands for now, or...